I would like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. A motion is in order for the approval of this closed session agenda.
I'm going to move it.
Oh, okay. Ms. Wall, would you like to read the motion to go into closed session agenda?
Yes. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Ralston second, Wall first. Any discussion? Please vote.
I can't.
Are you not in still? Okay.
I think it's because we switched or something.
I'll take a hand vote from you.
Okay, okay. That'll be good.
How do you vote? Just y'all put it in?
I think right or left.
Right. She's a yes.
Yay.
Yay, yay.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Wilk and Williams, motion passed.
Moving on the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order. Do I have a second?
Who said that?
I second.
Ms. Jessie first, Ralston second. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Wilk and Williams, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in approximately 30 minutes. Thank you. And the Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. Moving on to closed session certification, which if you click is 5.01. I need a motion is in order. Ms. Jessie? Or Ms. Zargarpur?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
There you go. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of January 15, 2020, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second? Ms. Ralston seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
Can you get in?
No.
She'll just abstain. She'll abstain.
Yeah, yay. Thank you.
Yay, she's a yay. She's a yay.
I'm right here.
Oh, yeah. I didn't know you came back.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Wilk. Motion passed.
Okay, so, Mary, I think, are we, we're not, are we adjourning or we're just going to move to the work session and come back in here to adjourn?
No.
So we're adjourning. So the school board meeting is now adjourned. We will now go to our official work session in the next room. Correct?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming and staying after to do our first of our work sessions regarding the budget. This first session will be talking about the proposed capital improvement program. And I will actually just turn it over to Dr. Walts for remarks.
Thank you Chairman Latif and members of the board. First of all, I'd like to welcome the newly seated board and in particular, the three newest members. Welcome. And we're very excited tonight to talk about our capital improvement plan. And we, we made some, I think, really great movement forward last year with some things that we hadn't had the money to do for quite a while, in addition to building many schools over the years. So that's always a big consideration. We got rid of quite a few trailers this year, more than any other year in the time I've been here. And we have heard from our task force on infrastructure, and we've heard from many community members, including many, many students, about some of our older buildings. And we are going to take you down a little different journey. A little bit later in this presentation, there's, I think, you'll be very excited about some things that we could do to our older high schools that have to do with light and windows and things that will change the look and feel and experience of the students and the faculty and staff who are in there. So we also have some representatives to go into some of those specifics and show you actual pictures of things that you may be interested in considering for the CIP from Mosley Architects. So we'll be welcoming them in just a little bit. So to kick us off tonight, Mr. Shiroki, our Associate Superintendent for Support Services, will lead us off. First of all, with a little bit about the notebook.
Yes, good evening. Chairman Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walts. It is my pleasure to formally introduce the proposed 2129 Capital Improvement Plan this evening. Just for starters, you have a notebook that is before you. And this notebook has several things, two of which we will look at this evening, and then there's some information that you will use as we work through the process down the road. In the book, the first piece is you have the presentation that I'm going to be presenting, as well as the presentation by Mosley Architects, working with the window projects that we're going to share this evening. We also have some CIP background information. In years past, there have been a lot of slides that have been very informational, and though they're very important, especially for our new board members this year, we wanted to have them in the background information so that we could focus more on what is new to the CIP this year, to make this an interactive conversation, as well as student enrollment projections and the technology plan. We have a slide, but there's an in-depth plan that is here for your review again as we get down the road.
With the presentation, quick, everyone, if you haven't worked in here, the microphones are in front of you. You hit the button, this is mic on/off when you want to speak, so everyone can hear you. And you feel free to drill Shiroki with questions as we go through this. I'm joking, but you can ask questions as we go. He's going to talk about that.
Oh, I see. Yes. First of all, I just want to say that I will be joined in presenting tonight's presentation by Mr. John Wallingford, our Associate Superintendent for Finance and Risk Management, as well as Mr. Matt Guilfoyle, our Associate for Communications and Technology Services. In the back, we also have several key members of our CIP committees, representing Facility Services, the Office of Finance, and I would be remiss if I did not thank them for the all-out effort that they have taken through this process to bring what is before you this evening, and I want to thank them. As well as the second half of our presentation, we have Mr. Billy Riggs, the Vice President with Mosley, as well as Mr. Kenny Durett, who is a project architect, who will be presenting on their behalf. And again, with, also with introductions, I don't want to forget, we have our Director of Technology, Ms. A.J. Phillips, who's also played a big part in what we'll, you will see that within the TIP plan that they have. So before we go over the agenda, I will say, we have two very in-depth presentations, and there are a lot of slides. And I know that each of you will have questions, and I would just ask that, knowing that many times the questions you may have, it may be the next slide down, to try to allow us to get through these slides as a whole, so that we could open it up for conversations. But we want to make sure that we're able to cover the material in depth, so that you get the comprehensive overview. But again, if there is something that's very specific and that we need to answer, again, as Dr. Latif said, we'll open that up. But again, for the sake of time, we just want to make sure that we get through this, because there's lots of information that we do have to share with you this evening. We're going to start with just talking very briefly about the CIP process, who's involved in the finances, the foundation that come behind it, on how much debt that we can actually sell in order to accomplish many of these projects. And Mr. Wallingford's going to do that piece. I'm going to discuss the proposed changes, give an overview of the updated enrollment projections, talk about the construction and renewals that are within the CIP. Mr. Guilfoyle will then talk very briefly about the technology improvement plan. I will then go into further detail with the changes to the CIP, to where I'll have individual slides for the new projects, where I can give you just a little more information about what we're really talking about when we, when we say we're adding something, or we're doing a renewal, or we're building a new school. And after which, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Riggs for the fenestration projects, and then I will close it out with the next steps. And then at that point, we're going to open it up for any general questions that we may have, knowing that you may have prepared questions for us this evening, or may have questions from the presentation itself. So in doing so, we started about two months ago, and you will see that there are several people who are part of the capital improvements program, from starting with the superintendent staff, to many key people within the Office of Facility Services, as well as our Financial Services Department in finance and budget, and then in technology. So we meet as a group, and we look at what we've accomplished in the past year, we look at where, where our projections, where our finances are, and we look at the needs based upon that information to, for us to develop what we have this evening. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wallingford, who's going to talk about the foundation of how we support many of our projects within the CIP.
Dr. Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Walts, I have three slides here. I'm going to talk about money briefly, and then turn this back over to Mr. Shiroki. The first slide you see here is debt as a percentage of revenue. Prince William County maintains something called their financial guidelines. One of those guidelines is a cap on debt, and you can see the black line at the very top, cap on debt of 10% of total revenue. The blue line you see is our debt service as a percentage of revenue running from 2013 and 2027. And you can see a peak in 2023. That's the peak over the next several years of this plan. We do have some space between the 10% cap and where we expect to be. The one thing that I'd add on this is that the county has just been authorized to sell a little bit over $400 million in debt, and so there is some potential competition between us for that capacity. These next two slides just provide you with some numbers. This picture shows what happens to debt service over the period 20 to 27. The green part of the bar represents new debt service that we add, and the blue, the bottom section of that bar, shows debt service that is being closed out, paid off at the end of the 20 years. Next slide out, please. This last slide, slide is just our debt sales over the, over the next 10 years, and you can see those running from $121 million. In our next sale, the V20A, going out to the V29 series, that will amount to about $63 million.
So I would like to take a moment just to talk about our recent accomplishments this past school year. And again, I'm going to go through these very quickly. But we opened John D. Jenkins Elementary School. We had several classroom additions at Antietam, Lakewood, Springwoods, Minneville, Leesylvania, and Stonewall Middle. We are working on the Special Needs Transportation Center at New Dominion, and we are very close to opening the Western Bus Transportation Center, as well as embarking on some school renewals at Leesylvania, Marshall, Montclair, and Old Bridge Elementary. And what we have here is just some slides, just to depict examples of what we did at Jenkins, the Western Bus Center, Stonewall Middle School, Minneville, Antietam, Lakewood, Springwoods Elementary. And then we're also embarking on two schools that are going to be opening in the fall of 2021. The first is Potomac Shores Middle, and here is a photograph that was taken just about two weeks ago, that shows the school currently under construction, and then there's some renditions of what the school will ultimately look like. And then we have the 13th High School, which is built adjacent to the Jiffy Lube Live area. And again, an example of, this is an aerial that was taken about two, three weeks ago, and then a rendition of what it would ultimately look like. In terms of changes in enrollment, as we look at the enrollment trends, we're still growing overall. And again, our division-wide enrollment has increased by 1,321 students, or 1.5% from the 1819 year to the 1920 year. Our 10-year projections have been revised to reflect current conditions. First, our elementary projections have been decreased based upon a downward trend in elementary enrollments, but our high school projections have been slightly increased due to the increase in grades, 9 through 12 cohort sizes. Our total enrollment projections have been revised slightly downward. And even though this number of 1,321 students might not seem that large in terms of impact, it's almost equivalent to two elementary schools. In saying that, each elementary school costs upwards of $32 million, so this is still a significant impact, though it's only 1.5%. When we look at division-wide enrollment trends, I say, because we have several new school board members this evening, and we want to have everyone on the same level of understanding, the following chart here shows the annual percentage change in total enrollment for the school division. And as you look at this chart, you're going to notice that back in 2001 to 2005, we were averaging approximately 4.4% enrollment changes each year.
Increases.
Increases. This was quite significant in terms of creating the significant capital needs to house the increasing student totals. However, this rate has slowed, and we have averaged about 1.2% growth over the past five On the first chart here, you can see the percentage distribution of our student enrollment by school level. Back in 1990, our students were 48.9% elementary. In 2019, that figure had dropped to 44.2%. Over the same period, our high school enrollment has shifted from 27.5% to our total of 30.7%. If we look more specifically at the last five years, 2014 to 19, the total Prince William enrollment has increased by 6.2%, and that increase has not been evenly distributed over the school levels. As you can see by the chart on the right, elementary enrollment only grew by 1.3% over this five-year period. Middle school enrollment increased by 8.4%, while our high school enrollment grew by a full 11.1%. These change in cohort sizes impact our future projections, and thus our predictions of the future capital needs of our division. So here are some key changes to the proposed CIP before you. As you will recall, last year, we had included three 11, 11 classroom middle school additions into the CIP. One was at Gainesville Middle School, and then the other two were at Marstella and Bull Run Middle Schools. What you're going to see is, when we introduced Bull Run, we did Bull Run because the need was really at Reagan Middle School, but Reagan Middle School could not accommodate an 11 classroom size addition at that time. So what we're introducing into the CIP, given the current projections, are to remove the 11 classroom additions from Marstella and Bull Run, but knowing that we only need a six classroom addition at this time, we could physically put that addition at Reagan where the growth needs are. So the net effect is, as a goal we always strive for, not to have to move children from Reagan to Bull Run, but to keep them at Reagan at this stage. In 2024, we are also recommending moving the 14th High School from the 24-year to the 25-year. This is in order for us to continue to find a permanent site location for that school. In '27, we are reinstating the Kelly Leadership Center addition to the CIP. And in '29, we are introducing an elementary school south of the Route 1 area to, again, to the CIP. And this is envisioned to relieve the current and anticipated overcrowding in the Dumpfries, Triangle, and River Oaks areas. Moving forward, we have three specific facility-based projects in our CIP this year. The first are adding secure vestibules at our two final schools that do not have them, and that is at Woodbridge Middle and Grand Park Middle Schools. If you're familiar with either one of these schools, when you walk into the front doors, you're walking into the main hall. So we've got to build some type of vestibule on the outside to control the movement before people enter into the school. Other schools, we've been able to do that very easily by putting some type of a glass wall up to create a divide. But if you, again, been in these schools, if you do that, you're blocking the flow of the traffic within the building. So we know that we have to do some substantial work to create it, to finish these two. In addition, we are recommending adding tennis court lighting over a three-year period, two high schools per year, so that tennis can be played after daylight hours. And then also, we have fenestration projects at four of our schools, Stonewall Jackson and Osborne Park, both for September of '22, and Garfield and Woodbridge High Schools in September of '25. In addition, we have a $12 million adjustment to ensure that we're able to complete all the core infrastructure requirements for the Hilton High School renovation. And then we have one new school added to the CIP this year, that is Grand Park Middle School Renewal. And again, that will be within the renovation schedule of year five in the '25-'26 year. So looking at this slide, this denotes the new schools and additions that are within the full 10-year CIP. So these are ones that have been here in years past, as well as the ones that I have just mentioned. Yes?
The person who's waiting still to ask questions.
I'm open to a question, yes.
You mentioned adding.
Oh.
I'll.
So when we look at the new school additions, these are the ones that are added to the full 10-year CIP, as well as the school site acquisition needs. This is the current list of where we need to find land. The funds that are required that are shown here are only estimates, and that these are obviously subject to negotiation as we embark on the land acquisition process. With the schedule of facility renewals, this is the school prioritization list that's included in the CIP. And again, you will see where, at the bottom, you see Grand Park Middle has been added for the '26 year. And at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Matt Guilfoyle to come up, just to give you a brief overview of the technology improvement plan within our CIP.
So sometimes, you know, timing is everything, and I am fortunate enough to be coming into Prince William County at a time where a lot of work has been done in the last few years, done by Dr. Walts, Mr. Yvonne, and A.J. Phillips, and the team, of course, focused on infrastructure, really building out our, our technology networks, the speed of our broadband, and improving our voice-over IP, improving our information security, and really positioning us well now, where we can move from beyond kind of what's in the wall to what's in front of the student. And so our focus moving forward is to really look at digital equity, which would be empowering every student in the classroom to be able to have that differentiated learning, to enable teachers through a learning management system to be able to have in front of them online, the ability to have a standards-based approach, so they would have their entire lessons plans online through the year. They would be able to share with other teachers, if they have a great lesson, that other teachers might benefit from using, they could share that online and then download it and have it available to them and to their students. We also are looking at long-term, how do we upgrade and continue to upgrade our networks? And now we're looking at, we're already at 10Gs, and we're looking at how do we go to 20. We continue to look at a data center migration, which would be that we're partnering with the county to co-locate our servers in a much more secure facility. It's an organization called Iron Mountain, runs a huge data center warehouse out in Gainesville, and we'll be looking at moving that, our servers into that, which is a tier-three data center. And then we also are looking at partnering with our finance and HR departments on an upgrade to our ERP system, which is our, all of our finances and all of our HR run on that system. Today, we have a system, it's kind of the way I describe it, is like, you have an old reliable refrigerator, like I have, which is 20 years old, but you know it's going to die one of these days, and you're going to have to get a new refrigerator. Well, that's kind of where we are with our ERP system. It's a, it's a very reliable system now, but we know that we need to be looking to the future and how we position ourselves. But really, for us, the biggest focus is on this digital equity piece. We believe that this will be huge in really empowering our students, how we can really transform teaching and learning throughout Prince William County. We're ready to move forward with a pilot starting this fall, and we're really anxious to get this started and hope that we're able to achieve that, so that we have that digital equity, that whole idea of removing barriers for students. Of course, you all are familiar with the old graphic of the, the students on the boxes and the fence. This is about removing that fence, and we really hope that we're able to achieve this in the next four years.
So the next piece of our presentation is just to give you some details on the proposed CIP changes, so that you can better understand what we are referring to. First is the security vestibules at Woodbridge and Grand Park Middle Schools. Again, I described that the front entrance is walk into the main hall. And looking at this, we're going to be looking at ways to create a vestibule that's either on the outside of the school, or finding a way to have a direct access into the office where you would not use the main entrance doors, you would use an alternate distance, set of doors when the school's within operation. Tennis court lighting, here is the proposed schedule. Again, it's a three-year phasing, starting in '21, and then we'll pick it up in '26 and '27. But it'll be two schools per year, and again, this will allow events to occur, work around primarily daylight savings time, but also potentially for community members to use when allowed. The Kelly Center addition, our focus on the addition is to provide additional meeting and professional development spaces to support our schools and educators. Currently, the building that we are in has a utilization of about 97.8%. We have maxed this out. And in addition to the collaborative space, many of the spaces within this building that were used for storage have been converted to office spaces as well. So we need to add some office and storage space, either within the addition or to modify the existing building once an addition is made. The Hilton High School renewal, you know, I mentioned the core infrastructure, but the core infrastructure is what most people never see within a building. You know, they feel the air, the new air, the new heat, they see new lights, but they really don't see everything that's behind the walls. And this slide just denotes that when we do a high school renewal, not only do we do the core infrastructure, but we focus on the instructional programming spaces. What are the students, the teachers, the parents, the community, what are they going to see, such as new finishes, carpet, tile, ceiling grid, new computer lab, computer labs with new casework, science labs with new tops and tables, bleachers being replaced, floors being replaced or refinished. Here at Hilton, they have some skylights where we need to install new ones, look at new exterior doors, new interior door hardware, new kitchen equipment, and then the older, any older technology equipment to upgrade them, to bring them to current standards.
Is there vocabulary questions? Could you define casework for people who don't know anything about construction?
Yes, thank you. Casework is, when you go into a classroom, if there are any cabinets, any storage areas, any shelving, and in elementary school, it could be cubbies, anything that is a piece of furniture that is built into the classroom. Though we supplement many of our classrooms with other furniture and equipment, this is the stuff that's actually permanently attached in most cases.
I have one more follow-up question. So when you say art and computer labs, are we also, is there any consideration to giving them modern equipment to go in there while we're modernizing the actual hardware, like, I don't know, 3D? I'm just starting out there, not saying we're going to get this system, but like a 3D printer for art, or some way to draw digitally, that kind of stuff.
So from a facilities perspective, our focus is, is really looking at the casework, but many times we work with the principal and the school staff to prioritize where their specific needs are. But in this case here with the art and computer labs, when these labs were created, you had the CRT monitors, and you had these fixed stations that were designed for desktop computers, and it's made their flexibility very limited within their classrooms. So we want to create spaces to where they're not fixed to a certain portion of a tabletop, and that they have, it's more open in case. But yes, we do work with the principals to try to find some prioritization where funds Reagan Middle School addition, if you look at the, there's an aerial on the right, obviously, but the one on the left, I'll say the salmon or the pink color classrooms, that is just a, a proposed area where the sixth classroom addition could be added at that school site. And obviously, when you look at this, you can see where it would be very difficult to add an 11 classroom addition, and that's why we could not. This is a one-story school, so, you know, you can't build up. It would be awkward to have a two-story addition. I'm not saying that it's never been done, but it's not something that we would traditionally recommend unless it was absolutely necessary. But this is where we would propose the addition. The fenestration projects at the high schools.
Window replacing.
Yes.
You're basically replacing the windows, or putting in, or putting in windows.
Thank you, and I assure you, I was going to. Thank you, and I assure you, I was going to continue to use those terms and move away from the architectural term. We, in facilities, were given a big task, and we've heard a lot of feedback, not only from our superintendent, but from many stakeholders, about how we can enhance natural light within specific classrooms. You know, bringing classrooms up to current architectural standards where allowable. And we've been asked to enhance the appearance of the school facade, as well as look at providing, what are the options that are available to add additional lighting? So in doing so, as Dr. Waltz said at the very beginning, we looked at four of our oldest high schools, schools that were built when there was, I will say, an energy crises, where energy was very important, and our designs and construction, not just in schools, but everywhere, were what I would call closed envelope-type designs, where it's brick walls with very little windows, very little opportunity for energy to come in or to escape. You know, at the time when these schools were built, we didn't have the energy-rated windows that we have today due to technologies. So it was appropriate at the time, but as we've looked at new designs, not only we see with our residences, but you see in commercial buildings, you have that ability to find that balance. So you will see that the schools have been broken into two groups, and we show in 2022 Osborne Park and Stonewall Jackson High Schools, because those are identical designs. But Garfield and Woodbridge are different than the designs at Osborne Park and Stonewall. So we have them grouped, because when I turned this over to Mosley to give you the exercise that we went through to see how far we could add natural lighting, the designs of the schools are very important, because it does create limitations in what you can and cannot do, versus being able to say that you could do everything at all four schools. So at this time, I'd like to turn this over for Mr. Billy Riggs and Mr. Kenny Duretto present to you the second part of the presentation that's in your notebook, and that is the addition of window details, the fenestration details for these four schools.
So as they're getting into place, a couple of other things I'd like to add about adding windows into buildings. When these older buildings were designed, there was no educational scientific research on the effects of lighting and the positive effects on learning. The other thing is, we had basically models all over the system, with the exception of Brentsville, that had very, very few windows. So when we changed the model and opened up Patriot and Colgan, that drew a lot of attention. And students and faculty and community love the lighting and love Virginia is a beautiful place, so almost all of our schools are nestled in a forested area, and so, at least on multiple sides, it's very beautiful here. In addition to the comments that Mr. Shiroki also said, we are actually able to save energy costs with lighting. So for example, many of the classrooms at both Patriot and Colgan, the automatic lighting is in the off position during many sunny days. There's enough window to let enough light in to be of an educational benefit. So I met with Mosley offline after listening to basically two solid years of complaining about certain models, concerns, yes, concerns. And then, you know, the other thing is, you get a couple schools located in two different parts of the school division, kids travel, and so they're playing games or going to music competitions, and they see these other schools, and they start saying, why does my school have to look like this, and, you know, why do they get everything in the new schools? So when I originally sat down for kind of a vision conversation with Mosley, I said, I would like you to do a study of what we actually could do with these schools that have few, very few windows, and work with our team, and come back to our school board, and share some options for their consideration. So when they did their work, it is very, very exciting to see it. You've got, you've got, well, you've got a couple of things. You've got money, and then you've also, so you've got to balance out the debt payments and all of that. And then the other thing is, it's, these are very, very big projects. So to have multiple projects going on at the same time is very ambitious in a high school. So I don't know if you have any other considerations.
The primary reason for the spacing is working with our debt capacity of what we can balance, and given two schools cost a different, have a different estimate than the other two schools, it's being able to find that balance to be able to get them done within the five-year period as aggressively as possible. But given the amount, we were very excited that we were able to put them where we put them, because...
Can I move this over here? Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Thank you all very much. Chairman Zatief, School Board, Dr. Waltz, thank you very much for having us this evening. My name again is Billy Riggs, and I'm with Mosley Architects. I'm the managing principal of our K-12 sector at Mosley. And with me tonight is Mr. Kenny Duretto. Kenny is our senior associate project manager with the firm. We both have over 25 years of experience with Mosley. A lot of our experience has been shown tonight, a lot of it's here in Prince William. We've been working on the 13th High School and the new Paton and Shores Middle School. We were thrilled when Dr. Waltz asked us to look into these projects, and as we go through them, Kenny's going to show you examples, but we really have two prototypes. The first prototype is the Stonewall Jackson and OP High School. It's one type of a building, that building is a very different structure than the other, the Garfield and Woodbridge schools. So we kind of have two solutions. They'd be similar for Stonewall and Osborne, and then the solutions for Garfield and Woodbridge are going to be the same. So what we're going to do is, I'm going to turn it over to Kenny and let him walk through some of those examples for you. I wish I could say they were both easy projects, one's a little more complicated, and one's a little bit more flexible, and you're going to see that in our solutions. So I'm going to turn it over to Kenny.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start with Stonewall Jackson and Osborne Park High School. Again, this is prototype one. Back when these schools were built, they had very few windows, but these two schools are very identical. So we analyzed these two separately from the next two projects that you'll see, but we came up with different options on how we could try to bring natural light into those schools. Again, we were trying to improve the experience of the kids in those schools, because unfortunately, back in the '70s, they had very few windows. So our goal was just to analyze these buildings from top to bottom, trying to figure out the best way to add natural light where possible. So with this school, with these two schools, we looked at different strategies for bringing natural light into the school. So we divided those up into what we call Option A and Option B. Option A was simply adding windows to the perimeter. So the top photograph you see here is a photograph of your existing conditions. The photograph below is how it could look if we increased the width and quantity of the windows. Currently, the classrooms that you have have very small windows, they're approximately 1' 11", which is very small for a classroom. Even some of the classrooms, such as the classrooms on the third floor here in the center, do not have windows at all. So we analyzed this, tried to figure out the best way to add windows and the possible locations for adding windows. And the bottom image, the bottom rendering here, just shows one possible way to do that. So you could go around to each classroom and take that 1' 11" window, just remove some of your existing masonry, and open that space up to go from a 1' 11" window to something, you know, eight foot, 10 foot wide, something more similar to what you'd see at Patriot, just to bring more natural light into those spaces. This rendering here just shows that you can make this change all the way around the perimeter of your academic wing. And on this prototype, it's a three-story school, so all of your classrooms on the perimeter of your three-story academic wing could benefit from adding windows to those areas. This view here is just a cutaway view showing the third floor with a roof removed. Basically, the areas shown there in yellow basically indicate the areas that would be impacted by adding new windows. Unfortunately, because of this plan configuration, you can see there's many classrooms on the center that are landlocked that just simply would not benefit from adding windows. So, but with this solution, we could add windows around the perimeter, and again, you know, 25% of your classrooms on this third floor could be vastly improved with those, additions of those windows. This here is some images captured from our daylight visualization software. I basically use this to understand the impacts of daylight in our classrooms, so we can model this building three-dimensionally, apply materials, locate your building and your solar orientation, basically determine how much natural light and the benefit of the natural light within those spaces. What you see in the upper right is the legend. Obviously, the darker black and dark and blue spaces are the areas with no natural light. The areas with the bright green and bright yellow, that's the areas that are obviously benefiting from that natural light. So you can see on the left is just your existing configuration, you can see how much natural light you're getting from those 1' 11" windows. You can also see that there's no daylight in the center of your school, but the image on the right shows, once you add those windows, you can see how much those perimeter spaces are improved. So with this, there's also an Option B. We looked at an Option B, trying to figure out how we could also get natural light into those center kind of landlocked classrooms. So with Option B, we proposed, or you could consider using solotubes. For those that don't know what solotubes are, it's basically a round skylight. Picture a skylight that's circular, about 36 inches wide, and that would be connected to a kind of a reflective tube, if you will, that kind of penetrates the area above the ceiling, comes down into the ceiling with a reflector on the bottom. So you could basically spread these across your existing roof, various locations, and your classrooms could benefit from that natural light. As Billy mentioned, there is a structural difference between these two schools and the next two that you'll see. This school, it's a very rigid structure, a very strong structure, but it doesn't allow for the flexibility that you'll see in the next two prototypes, or the next prototype. The area on the left in blue is what you typically see, you're still bar joist, but the area in right, that's your academic areas, your three-story academic wing, and that has a structural roof slab. Again, it's a very strong system. Unfortunately, it doesn't allow for the modifications that you would need in order to be able to allow cutting open large areas to provide skylights. We looked at that with our structural engineers, and unfortunately, it's just not possible with this structural roof system. What you have here is what we typically call a waffle slab or a structural roof slab system, and you see a photograph of that on the left-hand side. Unfortunately, that concrete that you see there is full of steel reinforcing, so we can't just simply cut a hole in it, because it breaks, basically breaks that structural system that spans these large distances. We did talk to the structural engineers, though, and we can add some solotubes. We just had to be very strategic about where we add those. We can't add them on the corners of some of these bays, and we can't add too many of them, because it starts to weaken that structural system. But with enough analysis and more structural investigations, we would be able to basically take the waffle slab that you see on the left and kind of cut that 36-inch hole out of the center of that, just to provide solotubes to some of those landlocked classrooms.
So what we wanted to do, too, is talk a little bit about the options that we presented. The first one with the windows, not as fancy a word as the fenestration, but we're really talking about adding windows around the perimeter of the school. We feel like that's a really viable option, something that really works. You saw how much more the floor plan would allow natural light into. Our structural engineers do believe that we could use a few solotubes in several locations, but we're a little hesitant to go full bore out with those. And that's based on this structural system. This structural system, it's a great building, don't get us wrong, because that building's going to be standing for a very long time. We really can't afford to build buildings like with that structural system any longer. But, so that's a little bit of the drawback, and why we had a little bit of a disclaimer on that slide, is just that going through the roof in this particular building and this particular prototype is a little bit difficult. So now that we've been through the difficult one, we want to go through the one that gives you a few more options, so you can see some of those there. I'm going to turn it over to Kenny.
Okay, so the next two we'll look at is Garfield and Woodbridge High School. Again, two identical schools, like the previous two, these were also built in the early '70s. I think this was '72 and '73 when these opened up. This is a two-story school. So again, just like the previous two, we looked at an option for adding windows, so that's what we call Option A. So again, in every classroom, you could go in and add a window, whatever length or width is decided. Here, we just indicated removing the masonry, basically from ground up, create a new steel frame to support the existing brick around the perimeter of that, but then just put a new storefront or curtain wall system in, and that would just allow you to get daylight into all of your perimeter classrooms. Again, the daylight visualization software, you can start to see which rooms are impacted and improved based on adding those windows. Option B, we looked at adding solotubes, again, to try to get daylight into some of those central spaces. With this particular plan, we looked at, again, on the right-hand side, you can see the spaces that benefit from the windows, but on the left-hand side, that's the floor plan if we added solotubes to all of the classrooms. So it basically takes roughly 112 solotubes, and that would allow two solotubes per classroom. So in the end, every single space on the second floor would have a benefit of natural light, and the spaces on the first floor on the perimeter would also have natural light because of the addition of the windows. Here, you can see just two examples where solotubes are added. Basically, the solotube would come down into a two-by-two grid with a reflector on there, and you just get, again, the benefit of the natural light. Because this is a two-story school, we tried, we looked at this from a structural perspective on trying to figure out how we could add solotubes so that they could benefit the lower floor as well. But unfortunately, the structural system, this is a different system than the first two projects we looked at. This is a hollow core system, so it's, not to get into too much detail, but there's hollow core concrete planks that are 24 inches wide, about eight inches deep, and they span from, they span from beam to beam. So unfortunately, it's just too complicated to add solotubes, or it's pretty difficult to add solotubes to the lower floor. So this is Option B, and you can, again, to see, it's hard to see the areas that are improved by adding the solotubes and the windows. Option C, add skylights. So here we see the addition of eight skylights. By doing this, we could remove some of those structural planks for whatever width is desired, based on the width of the skylights desired, and you could improve those central classrooms that do not have the ability to have windows, but you could get a tremendous amount of daylight into those classrooms by adding those skylights. And you can see here in this visualization, those spaces that are impacted with the addition of those skylights. Option D goes one step further, and this adds clear stories. By adding clear stories, you can start to get even more natural light and start to introduce the possibility of 21st century learning environments in this space. So this has skylights, this has clear stories, and also, again, shows a 12-classroom addition. The outlines that you see there in blue are just possible locations of where the clear stories could be located. This plan also shows a planned reconfiguration that would take some of your existing partitions, remove those, reconfigure your floor plan, so you could increase the size of your classrooms to approximately 725, 750 square feet, but it also allows you to add extended learning areas within the center of those academic wings. So here, you can see the location in blue of where those clear stories would go. And because we're removing some square footage to create those extended learning areas, you would need to build an addition. Here, we're showing roughly 10,000, 9,000 square foot addition in order to replace those classrooms displaced. And this is a rendering here of just how that space could possibly look. This is the, one of those extended learning areas, so it's a collaboration space for the students. Again, this would bring a tremendous amount of natural light into the center of these academic wings. You'd get a collaboration and activity areas for the students, and you could also, the classrooms adjacent to these... And you could also, the classrooms adjacent to these extended learning areas could also benefit from that borrowed light from that overall extended learning area. And you would have several of those on the second floor throughout the academic wing of these two schools.
And that's Garfield and Woodbridge?
Correct. So you can see here in option D, almost the entire second floor is yellow, which means you're getting daylight for all of those classrooms.
So you can see that the structural systems at the two different prototypes allow us to have a lot more flexibility at this current prototype. Unfortunately, we did these backwards. We did this one first, this prototype first, and saw how much we could do. When we got into the previous prototype, we realized that the structural system was a little bit limiting. But you can really see that here, if it was based, you can just see kind of some order of magnitude pricing to each of the options, if money wasn't an issue, how much you truly could do with the building, because its structural system is so flexible. So with that, we'll turn it over to Adam.
On option D, could new additions and things like that include more workspace, collaboration spaces, and learning spaces? Is that...
Yeah, that's what he was showing you.
Absolutely. So in other words, what we would really, we'd be building the addition to accommodate the renovations of those four quadrants. So we'd build the addition first, like you do in your renewals, move people out of that quadrant, build that new extended learning area in the center, repetition the classrooms, and be able to do it one at a time until you get all four of those completed.
So one of the things that we hear complaints about, we sized up the classrooms over at Patriot and Colgan. So a lot of these classrooms were where we took those open space classrooms, and this was just being finished the year I got here in all those high schools. And so you have these pie-shaped classrooms that are not too great. So this would, this would be a very big major improvement. The other thing is, again, you often hear, well, how come that school has this because our school doesn't have a space like that? Those collaboration spaces that he's pointing out that would be in those two schools, there's no other, neither one of the two newest high schools have that concept. So they would have something nobody else has.
I'm curious to know, just for fun. So let's just say we went with option D. Would we, at the same time, look at, because Woodbridge and Garfield have a history of like every so oft, every so many years, like you were saying, redoing the internal classroom structures? Would we be looking at the rest of the internal building as we, I'm just saying, like, in a perfect world, should we pick option D? Would we also then look at the way the classrooms are done now? Because, I mean, like, I've gone in the same space that I took art, is now business, it's also been like cosmetology, in the very same location. And I'm a big fan of, I mean, I think 21st century learning is more of a mandatory than something that we should think is optional. That's me. So I'm wondering if we do something like that, would we also look at the rest of the building so it would have the same sort of flow to it?
So we would look at our overall CIP when we do the seven-year renewals and then the 23, 24-year renewals. I don't know how that lines up, but we would certainly look, take all of that into consideration.
Okay, yeah, I don't need like a promise of this is, but, you know, I'm just, because sometimes when we do things, we have no option but to piecemeal them for structural issues or whatever the case may be. So I didn't know if that was actually an option that we have.
So you bring a good point. And if you, if you look at this slide, one thing that I'd like to say is, the way that we've tried to develop these concepts, it's almost like an à la carte menu. You can do, and we're recommending, you're going to see a slide, we're recommending option A. That's where we have identified funding within the five-year CIP to complete. However, if additional funding was to be identified down the road, we could do option B after the fact, and it wouldn't hinder what we did in option A. Option C and D, they are very construction intrusive to a school. And you bring up a good point, because let's say hypothetically, we were able to identify monies for option D at those two schools. When we looked at the collaborative spaces and transforming it, you do have to look at the whole school, and we do have renewals for these schools that are further down the road. So if we did go in before we did the renewals, we would want to make, be informed and make smart decisions. But keep in mind that the classrooms that are not being impacted, you might do some switching and say that this classroom that's not being impacted, we're going to move that classroom to where we're doing option D and swap it, and then when the renovation comes along, modify that existing room. But, you know, ideally, option D, which is very intrusive, you would want to do that at the same time you did a large-scale renovation, because how intrusive it is. Because it's heavy construction. You're moving kids into a new addition and having to close off areas like we do with our occupied renovations today. So the answer is yes, we would want to do that, but you just don't want to do one part of the school and not do the rest. So you'd have to be smart about how you do that, and making sure that whatever you do in option D, when the renovation comes along, that you address what didn't get addressed when option D was done.
Okay, I just, just for my own brain's sake, so you're saying, just for example, I'm not committing us or anyone, just for conversation. Option A would be like a initial, this is what we can do right now, essentially, we have funding, it doesn't cause a lot of disruption by comparison to the other options. Should we choose to think about doing something D, you would recommend doing that at the same time we do renewals?
You could do either, but I think the thing that we'd all have to be aware of is the disruption to the school over a period of time. If option D was to take two and a half years, and then five years later, we embark on a renewal that takes two and a half, three years, that school is, and the staff, and some of the students, there might be overlap, they are undergoing a big, a lot of transition, and they're very...
I think it's very important to consider that, I'm sorry, I mean to cut you off, but I also think that when we talk about things like option D, and we talk about equity for students, and we talk about the way the education is going and the way that students are learning, I'm not so sure it becomes that much of an option if we're going to have a building, I mean, I'm just thinking from a student learning perspective, not, obviously, clearly not a money perspective. But if we have six-year-olds now who, and I say this just because I've seen it, you know, have managed to come across grade levels to play Pokemon, and they're doing these things naturally, and then we give them a building that is designed for 1950s learning, I think we'll still have a lot of people storming the gates, saying we're not being equitable or fair to our students. But I also recognize and understand what you're saying, because that is the flip side of the coin, that is an actual reality that we absolutely must consider. But I just think that, you know, I'm just throwing that out there, too, because construction and disruption is good, something that we need to consider, but also providing an adequate learning environment for our students as they mature and education trends.
So a couple of other thoughts is that, again, when you're looking at upsizing these classrooms in the, in the Garfield-Woodbridge model, you're also offering an opportunity to increase the numbers. I don't know if we have that. There was some increase in enrollment numbers possible with those as well. And so you're not acquiring more land, you're not building a separate high school. The other, now, Mr. Shiroki is saying, this is, we're recommending option A. The only reason he's saying we're recommending option A is because we've identified the funding to do that. So I'm recommending option D, but the fact remains, and this was the great thing about what the team has pointed out, option A is something you can start with now, like we can get an RFP and start rolling the thing forward immediately. Well, almost immediately.
Options, the various options. First of all, from a safety standpoint, I was an assistant principal at...
I was assistant principal at Bennett Elementary. They have very similar window structures. And when everything went down, that entire building was so dark that you could not move around. We had to find flashlights, and I think it creates a safety problem. It's not just the lighting and the visibility and the feel-good in the building and the modernization. I think it's a safety option. The other thing, that stone wall and some of those buildings, and maybe technology can answer this, cell phones. When they had a lockdown, that stone wall, and they had no cellphone, they couldn't use cell phones, and the building was black, dark, where they couldn't see, I think it creates a safety problem. My other question is that it appears that the only two schools that could use option C and D, if I'm correct, are Garfield and Woodbridge High School. So my question is, could options A and B, can we do a timeline where we, if we don't do option D right away, that we create a timeline for the other options down the road? And then finally, when we look at our schedules for renovations at those buildings, I would think that we would be smart enough not to try to do, that we would try to integrate the process. Wouldn't, Al, wouldn't we try to integrate the process so you're not creating so much disruption?
In an ideal world, absolutely, because it would minimize the disruption to the instructional environment and for the staff and the community. But at the same time, there are cost efficiencies that come with that. When you mobilize, you're doing heavy construction, to do all of it at one time, there are some cost efficiencies. But it's just the timing, and I'd be remiss if I, you know, the renewals for these high schools are also going to be very substantial in cost. They are full-size, comprehensive high schools that will need full renovations, equal or even more than what we're doing with Hilton High School, given its age. So we, we know that that's coming as well. So when we work on that timeline, we just, we have to be cognizant of trying to get it all done to improve these environments.
Have you considered option, have you considered option A and B as a recommendation?
We just don't have the funding identified for that at this point. So that begs the question, is there any chance we might be getting more funding that we don't know about? I mean, I read a lot of things in the newspapers. I've heard a lot of things during election season about more funding and wanting to do things for the school division. So, again, we don't determine that, but I think that would be worth exploring. And I'll just leave it at that.
So since, since the only two schools that can do option D, C and D, would, if we went with one option, would we get a timeline for the other, we would get a timeline for the, to move to option, from option A to D?
Well, we can look at all of that, especially when we figured out, is there going to be any more funding? So, for example, we receive a mark from the county government every year on the amount of money that we're going to get. And the last few years, they have stuck to their county board of supervisors' approved five-year CIP, or five-year plan, their five-year plan. So we have gotten the number that's consistent with what was in the five-year plan over the last couple of years. We've gotten that number. What we don't know is, can we expect anything in addition, given what we've been hearing the last few months? And that's an unanswered question.
Yes, and my last question is, would the technology access improve with those options? And I guess someone from...
Well, we have a technology improvement plan that is running parallel to some of these things as well, but yes, windows definitely enhance that.
Yeah. Is the reason that stone wall, that you can't, is because of lack of windows, or is it a, what's the factor?
It's the method of construction. You know, where, when we're in our residential homes that are built with wood and vinyl and brick, you can get the reception within those buildings, but when you're building block buildings, brick buildings with steel and glass, it's not just in schools, it's in buildings as a whole. If you're at a hotel and a conference, in the center of the hotel, you can't get reception either. It's the penetrability concern that you have. So it's not, it's not uncommon, but we have to be cognizant of that, just as many of our schools have alternate communication plans, they have radios, they have ways in which they communicate, knowing that cell reliability doesn't exist 100% in our buildings.
I just could see students, well, my daughter happened to be in one of those buildings, they went into a panic because they could not, they had a lockdown and had no way of communicating, knowing what's going on. So I just think that that whole aspect of safety with today's climate...
And you're right about the windows, because if you go into any school where you have difficulty with cell reception, all you have to do is ask some of the teaching staff, what window do you go to to get the cell? But part of what we're doing here is, you know, we have a contract with Mosley that we can do this preliminary kind of exploration, but if it's something that the majority of the board is interested in, you obviously have to do an RFP for that. And the other thing is, based on what we're trying to achieve with good communications between the board, the superintendent and staff, or the board and the administration, is wanting to share with you these concepts, which are the direct result of what we've heard from board members and from community members and students and staff. So before we go down the road too far, we wanted to see what you thought about it, and again, you know, we've got several weeks to deliberate about this.
I had a question about the solotubes. And I'm assuming that when we are looking at the light map that shows like the amount of light, that we're looking at a sunny day, right? Right. So what is, can you tell us what, what about cloudy day, how much light, is it going to be, still be significant, or will it be quite a lot reduced?
One of the big conversations that we had during this is that the solotube is a methodology for getting light into the school. I don't think that the solotube is necessarily achieving the real goal, which is to be able to have vision out of the building and to be able to sense the weather. It's all, even on a cloudy day, it's still going to allow natural light in, but it's going to look more like a two-by-two light fixture laid in the grid. I don't think you're going to get the impact that the clear stories or skylights would give you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just giving you a hard time. So could we get a very simplified version, because I know we don't have a crystal ball, we couldn't have exact numbers, but maybe what it would look like for our sake and for, because we answer a lot of questions from the public, or maybe the school division could come up with something that would give us a cost analysis in a very estimated way of why something like this would be beneficial for Woodbridge and Garfield versus building a new school? Because I don't think that we often think about like the price tag for a new school. Like, a parent is not going to be like, well, why would you do this versus just build a new school, tear that school down and put a new one there? Why is this more beneficial, sort of a language? Because I think that's also important to understand, because the price tags are large still. So if I was, had a student at Woodbridge, for example, and you're giving me windows, and I'm like, but all the other schools are new, how come we just can't tear it down? Is there something we could get to, to kind of not only educate us, because we have new board members, but just, you know, we could ask these questions?
So we can certainly get the cost of the high school we're building right this minute.
That'd be good, you know, just what is it? And for architects, is there somewhere that, besides Google, like maybe you could point us to, to look up more information on solotubes? And I know this is going to be a silly question, but how would that facilities impact their ability to clear snow on a roof?
Okay, before we go to clearing snow...
I don't need that, I don't need that answer right now, but I'm just thinking like, do we need to get...
We'll check, we'll get, we'll get back with you on that snow. Somebody capture that.
I'm just wondering, like, those, not just solotubes, but like any roof, how would that impact facilities, too? Because they also...
Well, we don't generally shovel the roof, but...
I know, but I'm just saying.
A board member for that district would be up there.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at...
I don't, I mean, I don't know if that changes anything.
Right, well, there are other, there are places that have those, so, yeah.
We'll ask, laugh.
We'll get back, we'll get back with that. So Ms. Williams, back to your question about the cost. So in the current budget for the 14th high school, the 14th, not the one we're building, it's 152 million. So when you think about that kind of a price tag, if you can change this and then do a major renovation, I mean, you're, you're spending one-third of the money to get a beautiful, you know. The thing is, these buildings are very strong buildings. They're, they're not like things you need to tear down.
If you have earthquakes, what happens? You know, will it shake and not fall down?
We, I assure you, it will not fall down.
Let's move through some other questions.
So I just have a few more slides to close it out, and we're going to open it up to questions. So this slide here, this is for, mainly for the public to see. When we advertise our capital improvements program, this is the summary, which goes with projected growths due to capacity, the amount of monies that are within the proposed cost of the CIP, as well as new facilities and existing facility counts. With respect to our timeline, we're here this evening on the 15th. We'll be bringing this back to you. The proposed CIP and operating budget will be presented to you on February 5th. There will be a public hearing on February 19th. March 11th, there'll be the final school board CIP and budget markup. And then March 18th would be the time at which you, as a board, would approve... And then March 18th would be the time in which you as a board would approve the CIP and the operating budget for the school division. So with that, that concludes the presentation that Dr. Waltz and I have, and we are open to--
At this time.
At this time.
Question to Mr. Wallingford, going back to the first slide on debt. John, you said that the cap for the debt is 10%. That's for the entire county or just the school division? That slide is, 10% is, that's a shared debt between us and the county. We can't go over 10% of revenue for the whole county, right?
Thank you.
Someone put up that--
Yeah, if you would, yeah, yeah.
The third slide.
Get there in a second.
Debt as a percentage of revenue, that's quite a lot of money.
So let me repeat your question, just to make sure I understand. The question you're asking is whether we're in competition with the county for debt capacity.
Well, when you say debt capacity, we're at 9%, say this year, is that combined capacity between us and what they're borrowing?
No, this calc, this calculation, that's a very good question, Dr. Latif. This calculation includes our, our revenue and our debt. When the guys over at the county do the calculations, they do it combined--
Yes.
And the numbers are very, very close, because our debt drives the total debt. We're big.
So this 9% is all of our debt?
That's correct.
On the slide I'm looking at.
That's all of our debt as a percentage of all of our revenue, of our--
Are we going to borrow another .96 then to get to the 10, or is that the county is--
With regard to the cap, we could certainly borrow more money, but there are obviously other considerations like cash flow to pay the debt service and the ability to do, you know, to do the extra work and that kind of thing.
Well, you say there's competition with the county because they want to borrow now some more, you said, or what was it?
Well, they recently had approved--
I asked the doctor to use his microphone.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The county recently approved, I think it was 410 million dollars in debt. That debt will be sold over a period of years, but it's just additional debt that would be in competition with the total 10% cap.
Any idea what each percent is? Like what 1% represents in bond, in--
Well, our total, our total, our total revenue budget is about 120 million, excuse me, 120, 1.2--
Two billion.
Thank you. I'm having a hard time saying the billion. 1.2 billion dollars.
So each percent might be then 14 million, 15 million? Meaning if we wanted to go from 9% to 10%, we would borrow another 15 million to get--
No, we wouldn't borrow another 15 million. That would be the debt service that we would incur, which would mean, you know, 100 million dollars. It's a fair amount of money.
No, no, I, it wouldn't be another 100. So if I said to you, John, borrow up to the 10% cap, how much more money would that be on a yearly basis that I could borrow?
Trying to make sure I understand your question.
If I max out, what's, so, so right now we're borrowing 100, we sold 110 million last year--
Correct.
That's about 9%.
But, that's true, but what you also have to understand is that we get more revenue each year--
Yeah, yeah.
So that number moves each year.
So, but, but, so that 100, that 110 or 20 million we sold in bonds this year is about 9%. If we said we wanted to go to the max, we could borrow 100, 130 million.
Something in that ballpark, yeah.
10 million more, 15 million more, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
So, so I, so I'm talking about like, how do we find the money for these other projects? Could you borrow more up to the cap?
Yes.
Which we aren't doing. But you're saying then also, we have to pay that back?
Yes. That's correct.
If we have that much money to do that. I don't know, I just wanted to understand.
And you, and, but paid back over 20 years?
Yeah.
So it's amortized over 20 years. And again, you know, depending upon the revenue stream--
And the rate.
You know, a small adjustment yields quite a bit of money.
The, the one last thing I'd say is that every dollar that goes into debt service is a dollar we can't spend in the general fund on all kinds of other things.
Anything to add over there?
Just, just a thought.
Sure, Lori.
I have a bunch of questions, but I'll start with, um, elementary schools. So I heard that our elementary school population is declining. Um, I noticed that we intend to add an elementary school south of Route 1 in 2029, and that we're currently looking for one now in the northern Route 1 area. But my concern is not necessarily the population decline, because we're already overcrowded, even though we reduce trailers. I'm concerned about the facility space in our elementary schools, because like, you know, my kid eats lunch at 10:30 and a bunch of other kids eat lunch at 10:30, which is really early. And how do we, how is that reflected in the CIP? Any sort of resolution that we have for that? Because there's, I know we're limited, like we can't just, we max out on an additional space. I, I don't know that 20, 2029, based on just population, is soon enough? Like if we do magically put a new elementary school in Route 1 northern section within the next, you know, two years or so, is that going to be enough to mitigate having our students eat lunch at 10:30 in the morning? That's a big deal.
So I'll, I'll respond to that. So you used Featherstone as an example?
Yeah, because their title won, you know, they're limited.
Okay. So again, I'm just stating facts. So when we did the boundaries, it was the board, the majority of the board's desire to minimize the movement.
Absolutely.
So by not moving more students out of Featherstone, which is an overcrowded school, that's what drives the early lunches.
Right.
So to mitigate that kind of thing, the board can always go back and relook at boundaries at any, at any point in time. And, well, I'm not, I'm, I'm just, again, stating the options. If you wanted to mitigate the lunch situation, you either revisit the boundaries, or you build an additional school, which you're going to automatically revisit boundaries.
So that's what I'm saying, so we have that, so we magically have a site and we're going to build. Is that enough? And maybe planning, could, I see you back there, help answer that? Like, would that be enough to try to help with that? Because I, I, I agree, like, we did decide not to do a lot of boundaries.
Right.
And I think that that's the, I still feel that that's one of the smartest things. I'm not complaining my son eats lunch at 10:30. I'd rather him eat lunch at 10:30 than be moved to three schools within his elementary career, from a parent perspective. I'm just curious to know if adding that elementary school soon in the northern section and adding one in the southern section of that Route 1 corridor, is that going to be enough to mitigate those type of situations due to the constraints we have? Because they're older facilities and we're restricted on, already on classroom sizes, and those schools have those smaller lunchrooms and they have, I mean, it's a multi-pronged issue. It's not just because there's a lot of students, it's also because the facility space is small.
Yeah, well, yeah. So it all goes back to boundaries. So in answer to your first part of the question, yes, building those two schools would be a tremendous help, depending upon what decisions you made on boundaries.
Okay. Okay. And then my next question is, and these don't have to be answered right now, if we could get, maybe get an email response, is, is there consideration when we look at the CIP for what we have coming down the pike? Like are the small area plans that have come out, what the county would like to see us do versus what we plan on doing? And our increase in population, like I know the census will tell us that we're having more people, and we read about that all the time. I'm just wondering, and I ask these because we have new board members as well, and maybe we could get some sort of insight on how those fact things are factored in to the small, to our CIP. And then my, my next question is, do we have anything, and I only have two more, do we have anything planned for our elementary schools? Or I guess I should say, I should start with saying, do all of our elementary schools have science labs and story rooms and music rooms and activity rooms? Because we're still hearing that some of our art is on wheels or our music is on wheels, and I don't know off the top of my head which school has what, but I, I'm wondering if we could get that information?
So every year, I charge the staff with looking at those very things. We look at that every year. Are there any music teachers on a card? Are there any art teachers are on a card? That sort of thing. So that's, that's one set. So yes, I don't know if they've completed that for this year, but yes, we can give you that information.
Okay, perfect.
And then the second thing is, in terms of the way spaces are used, there's a, there's flexibility, depending upon code and that sort of thing, with how certain rooms are used. So occasionally, you'll see someone who wants to use a room in a different way. Like, we've got more than one school that's using a classroom space as a maker space, and very creative and very innovative, and they can pull that off. So there's some flexibility within the schools as well.
Okay, if we could just get that information, that'd be fantastic. And then my next question was, so when are we going to see program capacity at the middle and high school levels when we look at the CIP? I know that that is a huge, huge, huge undertaking, and I'm sure that the planning staff is probably tired of me asking this for the second, or whatever many years in a row. But I am really interested in that, because again, it goes back to equity and how our students are learning and the way education is and the way we use our facility space, which also impacts our dollars. I'm saying all this because we have new people. So, um, I, as we plan and we think about those things, especially when it comes to like the proposal D for Woodbridge, those are things I think that the board should really factor in when we make those decisions, is how we utilize that space in the building and the way education is going.
So Dave Beaver's Facility Services. So based on your wisdom last year, you provided us with a new position, an admin coordinator for school planning. And this individual's task, right off the bat, is look at middle schools, develop a middle school program capacity model to allow us to appropriately assess what our capacities are at middle schools prior to doing the boundaries for the Potomac Shores Middle School. Our admin coordinator for school planning is here, Matthew Townsend. He's, we, we let him come out tonight, usually he--
Welcome, I've been waiting for you.
So we know how important this is to accurately assess the capacity, especially with the boundaries coming up for the middle schools. We'll start those, those this spring and have, you all will be involved very actively.
I'm so excited.
Yes, it's going to be great.
Which boundary, middle school?
Middle, Potomac Shores.
Potomac Shores Middle School, and that'll, that'll impact another, a number of schools.
Thank you, I'm, I'm very excited about that, as you know, because of the way, well, a lot, I've said already. And then my last question is for the Kelly Building addition. I noticed that there was a line in there for meeting space, because obviously we need that for our staff, professional development, it saves costs in the long run. Would there be an option to use that space or make that space available for revenue for the public? Because Prince Wayne County really doesn't have any meeting space like that, of what I'm sensing the new addition would be. So that would be another way that we, as a school division, could be innovative and at the forefront. So I'm wondering if that would be something that we would think about using, utilizing that space for?
So the answer--
The, the answer to that is yes. And in fact, again, for the benefit of the new people, this was in the budget until last year, and we're putting it back in the budget. But the whole design of this entire property, the parking lot, we already have the land, the parking lot has already been built, the infrastructure is already in place. So, you know, you, we knew when this was designed 15 years ago, that you can't add 25,000 students and not need some additional space to do professional development and office space and so on and so forth. So, but the answer is yes.
I like, I like when we can make money off our existing space, too.
Well, I think we have eliminated almost every leased space. I don't know where, where is John? But we had a number of things, places we were leasing, and I think we have closed out every lease that I know of.
We're not leasing any properties, any buildings.
Yeah, so that's, that's, all that money was diverted to bricks and mortar that we own.
Lisa.
All right. How do we get projections on enrollments? Like, how, where do those numbers come from? How do you, who does that, first of all? How do we get those numbers? And then the second question I have to that is, does anyone go back and say, oh, we were off by 10, or, oh, man? Like, I, I'm just curious.
So yes, we have, within the Office of Facility Services, we have Supervisor of Planning, Matt Cartlidge, who's primarily, primarily responsible for developing those enrollment projections. And it's an elaborate process that a lot of thought goes into it, a lot of work. And we do look every year at what our error rates are and where we're off and why we're off.
And why, okay.
With the Joint CIP Committee that we had with several school board members and several Board of County Supervisors members, we went through a process of reviewing that enrollment projection methodology. We actually had an outside consultant come in and do an analysis and give us the results, which were fairly favorable. Some suggestions for improvement, of course, but we're already starting to implement those changes. But there's, there's a pretty significant process we go through.
Okay. I wasn't sure, you know, just hear this thing. The other question I had was about the digital equity. And is that K-12? Or is it only in high school? Or is it middle and high, like--
Anywhere you want it to be, if you give me the money. No, it's K-12, our vision. Well, I should say, K through 3, we're looking at a more 3 to 1--
Okay.
--type of ratio for students to have devices in the classroom, but 4 through 12.
Okay. And then if we have the capacity to, say, middle through high school have a digital access, can we then maybe transform how our students are showing their knowledge by creating online? This is not my idea, by the way. Mr. Muulun, I believe his name is, he's a teacher at Colgan, actually talked about this, so I'm calling him out on this. But he had this idea about creating online portfolios to highlight their learning, so that it would eventually be something they could use as either an example for college or career, preserved as some sort of record of their, of their learning as an online portfolio, of just all these little artifacts of things that they've worked on, research and things like that, how you use Excel, how you evaluate data and present it. So is that someplace we could go with, maybe?
So I think even before we hit the digital equity part, a learning management system would definitely help in that arena to allow the students to be able to have access and be able to create these types of portfolios. Actually, you could create it now with our Microsoft Office products that we have across the division. They could create portfolios. Each student has their own OneDrive that they could upload these documents to and be able to have that kind of portfolio already. So that could, that's already in place, that we could do that. I think a learning management system would also help with that, so teachers have everything in one place, so parents and students can go to that one location.
All right. Just stuff I've heard along the way. Thank you.
Awesome, yep.
I'm done.
Okay.
Hi. I just have a couple of questions that, for you. First of all, I want to thank you guys for meeting with me this morning and going over some of these items and some of these things. I just wanted to make sure it was for the public record. I want to thank you for agreeing to at least look at Rockledge and, you know, those schools, the two schools we talked about this morning in terms of doing a feasibility study. West Ridge, the parking is horrible, and just to relook at those two areas, I appreciate that. Also, when I was in Richmond, the Secretary of Education came to me and said, look, you're not, there's money available, and he mentioned space. But, you know, I'm very familiar with the matching funds situation is, and I was asking Ms. Goss this morning, she just out this evening, can you tell me where we are with our plans for facilities? And also, the question came, became whether or not we could use public facilities for space such as churches, and we talked about that a little bit. I want to get your views on that.
Well-- That's usually very difficult for public schools, because there's a whole set of code that has to be used, the way they do wiring and electrical and--
Yeah.
--all of that kind of thing. We had a supervisor who really wanted to do a shared space, where they had a school in with offices and that sort of thing, but then you've got safety, public access issues, you've got strangers coming in the building. So I don't see us doing that in the foreseeable future.
Okay. Is it a space issue or is it matching funds? That there's, there apparently there are funds available, and his concern was that we were not accessing those funds?
What was that, Ms. Jezzy, what specific? What was that, Ms. Jezzy, what specific?
Preschool education money.
Oh, the preschool money? Okay. So you're asking about the matching funds for that?
I'm, I'm wondering if the Secretary of Education was talking about, he didn't mention matching funds. I'm very familiar with the matching funds situation that we've been looking at for years. But he said that we weren't asking for the funds because it was a space situation.
I'm with you. So, so yes, it's, it's space and then you have to have the matching funding.
Okay.
But it's clear to me from input from the board and, you know, I know the platforms people have run on and the interests that they have. And I'm starting my individual meetings, so you're more than welcome to give me your opinions at any of those. But we will be planning to expand, expand those programs.
You are.
And we also have a committee who's looking on private partnerships as well. So people that have spaces in a childcare facility that meet all the code requirements. So I have a committee that's working on that right now to see what the feasibility of that is, if we need some additional space.
Well, I'm on that Headstock Policy Committee and I've been on that for years and that was one of the questions that they had. On slide, on page nine, slide 18, I guess I have a question about that Route 1 corridor Why, what's, why is the date so far down the road on that one? That's not a question I asked this morning. It's 2020.
The southern Route 1 or the northern?
The 21, 2029. Why, why is the date so far out?
In that general region, we've got Potomac Shores Elementary School Number Two coming first. So that'll provide a stopgap to overcrowding in that area. You know, we're seeing a lot of development going on there.
I'm thinking about Potomac View and some of those schools.
So that's northern. Right. So we have.
That'll be offset by 2022, 23, the Akaquan, more Woodbridge.
The Woodbridge, the Akaquan replacement?
Yes.
I'm thinking, no, no, I'm, I'm thinking about the, I'm, I'm thinking about the land on Route 1.
Yeah. There's two now.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Okay. Well, what date is the one, the line, the plan on Route 1 coming in?
The northern Route 1, I think that's twen, there's a Akaquan-Woodbridge area in 2023. Now, we still need a site for that.
Yeah. That's a possible Fred Lynn one.
That's a Fred Lynn site that we're talking about.
I don't know what you're talking about and I am not free to discuss that.
Oh, that's right. You are not free to discuss that at all. I am so, so.
Let's know that that's my district and I have no clue about that.
Well, we have no, no clue about that. And we are looking at the small school, the small area plans with the Board of Supervisors and I plan, I appreciate you guys working with us on that. Those are all my questions.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for the morning, taking the time with me.
I just have one question and it may come up later, but for the digital equity piece, I'm so sorry you went and sat back down.
That's okay.
Will we get like a detailed, like vision of what it looks like at some point?
I'm gonna let my boss take over that.
So I'll, I'll lead off with that and, and then if Mr. Gilfoyle wants to add, he, he can. So again, we're in the process, the next thing that happens is the, called the Superintendent's Proposed Budget, so that's where I lay out the bu, a budget to you. And we're trying to identify how much funding we would have to start this off. Because that's, that's the trickiest part of implementing something that ambitious. So we will have some detail, yes, once we identify exactly how much we think we can put into, especially year one. And Mr. Gilfoyle, anything you'd like to add from maybe the TIP? I don't know what.
So in your, in your binder, towards the back, there is a tab that says Technology Improvement Plan. And on page 11, page 10 and 11, there is actually a fairly detailed plan for the rollout of this. And obviously that is highly budget dependent in what we're able to do, but this lays out a possible roadmap for how we would implement. So on pages 10 and 11, you can see the detail there.
And just let me remind everyone, feel free to email questions to Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent's staff on anything you see in here that you feel like you may not have got answered for, anything you want deeper dive details with, feel free to make an appointment to meet with them as well, to go over any questions, concerns you have in the budget for full explanation. So before, if you take a look at the list of the meetings coming up, so February 5th, we are next, the CIP Budget Presentation, School Board, Public Hearing, Final School Budget. So as you start thinking about your questions, keep those meetings in mind so that when you do come, you'll have either your questions answered in advance of that meeting or bring them to those meetings. Dr. Walts.
So thank you for mentioning that, Chairman Latif. So that is a standard practice that we will answer your questions in between times. So just to help you get the most efficient way to get those answers, if they're financial, they go directly to John Wallingford. If they're CIP related, they would go to Mr. Shiroki. If they're technology related, they would go to Mr. Gilfoyle. And then the entire board, we try to answer all the questions between meetings that we possibly can, leading up into a day or two before the meetings. And then we distribute the questions and the answers from everyone to the full board. So in good board, you've probably already had this in your training, what one board member gets, every board member gets.
So, so for example, if I ask a question about community use of the tennis courts after we put the lights on there, they'll send that answer to the entire board and it'll say, Dr. Latif asked about community use of the tennis courts when lights are in there.
Good exam. Ms. Williams.
I just had to add on to mine. So I had asked for the impact, how we consider census and small area plan. Could we also put some verbiage in how we consider like the impact of Amazon coming in? Because I know everyone and their son has studied that. And I asked that with knowledge that, again, I say that a lot, we don't have a crystal ball, so they're not gonna, staff is not gonna give us like a, .3 people are going to move here and we're gonna, but just so that we, for new members and refresher for my brain, so that we have an understanding, they're also thinking about that, too. And this is how they think about that when they develop these plans.
Just one more question. Projection for elementary, this morning when I was in the policy meeting, they noted that there's been this reduction in enrollment at the prime, at the preschool level, that they've lost a lot of students. This loss of elementary students, is there, is, do you guys know that what's going on with that, what's causing that? Does it have anything to do with immigration?
Well, I mean, I, I think we, we, well, we addressed this at one of our meetings already. We, the, the enrollment projections have been going down partly because during the recession, people had less kids. And so those kids would now be entering sort of your elementary level schools. And so that, that happened nationwide and so there's a general drop. There has been a drop. I don't know if that's continued or will, with the economy getting better, people start having babies again? So that may go back up. But I know that was one of the main driving factors for reduced students nationwide.
I'm here. We're back for another season. Chairman Latif, there's a school board, new members. I'm Dr. Cartlidge, I'm the Supervisor of Planning. I help lead the student enrollment projection process and the redistricting process with the team. Speaking to your question, one of the factors that we look at when projecting kindergartners specifically is birth rates. We look at the ratio of how many children are being reported to the Department of Health. We then let five years elapse and compare that to the kindergartners who we have present. Produces a nice ratio. We also look at those same ratios for our neighbors in Fairfax County Schools, Loudon, Faukeer, Stafford. And we're seeing trends that are suggesting that our enrollment is going to decrease at the elementary level. And the question is why? One of the contributing factors is the millennial generation has consistently delayed every part of the major lifecycle changes. They have delayed marriage, they have delayed leaving the more urban core, like the DC core, delayed moving out to the suburbs. They've also delayed having children. And we're seeing a bit of a, an echo or a bubble where these children who historically would have been generated, it's starting to taper off a little bit. I'm like, I jokingly say, you know, we're only one good recession away from a student enrollment boom. So that's the other factor that we have to be mindful of, is that it's not only the fertility rates or having children in those areas, also the migration factor. So we monitor all those things every year as part of our enrollment projection process that feeds the CIP, the reason we're here this evening. And I think that's just kind of what I wanted to offer up to you all. Thank you very much.
Ms. Wall, Jen Waugh.
Yeah, I had a question. So we have four schools, going back to the fenestration question. So we have four schools that we've identified, high schools that need more windows, which I agree, we do need more windows. Is this an ambitious plan in that we are going to continue tackling every single high school all the way up to Battlefield High School? Is that the last one that was built under the old model? I guess my question is like, are we, once we start this, are we going to keep going? Or are we just going to go with these four because they're the ones that are most needed?
Well, they're, they're by far the oldest and they have the least number of windows. So for example, like when you go into Battlefield next time, like when you go into that main, the cafeteria areas and things like that, you'll notice that it's full of skylights. But you won't see that in these old, old schools. So at least at this point, that's not really where the board heard the complaints coming from. So we are interested in, in these four schools that are of a even older model. And then Brentsville has a lot more windows because of the style that it was built. But we also have a very large renewal coming forward for Brentsville as well in the not too distant future.
To, to Ms. Wall's point, when's the date for the Battlefield renewal? Is that set yet?
There's a schedule of renewals.
I know, I was looking for it. I didn't see the renewals for the.
But I don't know if that.
Going out farther than 10 years.
No, that wouldn't be out there farther than 10 years.
Okay. Do we have any idea when the Battlefield renewal?
I mean, we can look, but those sometimes change. That's why we don't go out further, but we'll write that down as a question.
So Jen, if you look in your CIP, it says Hilton High School Renewal. I think that's coming up sooner.
Starting next year.
Next year. And that's 25 million.
With this, actually this school year at the end.
So that'll be a 25 million project, right?
That's correct.
All right. So yeah, so each high school, every four or five years, we go through and do the update.
Well, it's a, it's a seven-year renewal plan. So it's called a refresh in those seven-year plans. So it's like carpet, painting, things that, that are needed like that. And then approximately every 23 or 24 years, we do a major multimillion dollar renewal where we go in and do a lot of infrastructure things. It might be electrical, it might be HVAC, it might be both, could be plumbing, but it's a multimillion dollar.
Any, any other questions, concerns, thoughts? Please email them and, and stay on this, whatever questions you guys might have. I want to thank the staff and everyone for coming out tonight. And, and Mosley Architects for, for working with us to show us and explain fenestrations.